All set for the pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the republic which it stands. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor number. Nice job on that Diane.
Thank you Tony, I did that just for you.
Yeah, thanks. Let's see, so all we have is the Bristol Yarn Mill, also known as Robin Rug, major land development continuation of the March tech meeting. For planning board review and possible action by the board on the master plan review. Of the major land development for the redevelopment. Of the Robin Rug Mill to be known as Bristol Yarn Mill located at one twenty-five Thane Street. Proposal is for a one hundred thirty residential apartment units in approximately sixty-three hundred square feet. Of commercial space in the mill building. Proposal includes parking on the east side of Thames Street. That is located approximately one hundred thirty feet south of the intersection of church and Thames Streets. Planning Board also to make recommendation to the town council on the proposed change of zone request. To amend amend the original zone. Uh change conditions on the mill property to change the zone on the parking parking lot properties. To a waterfront planned unit development. Properly property currently zone waterfront planned unit development with conditions. Waterfront downtown zones and all and also is within the historic district. Uh Bristol Historic District, Plattean lots. Forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-nine, fifty, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-eight, seventy-one, seventy-three, seventy-four, and seventy-six. Owners Russ Russ Realty Company and Carrion Realty Company, applicant Brady Sullivan's Properties LLC. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the written and verbal testimony and exhibits in the record. And to direct staff on the preparation of a draft decision. The public informational meeting portion has been closed and no public comment will be taken at this meeting.
Thank you Tony.
Mr. Chairman, can I just mention a few things about procedural stuff?
Shoot. Go ahead.
First of all, I think we're gonna ask, we've got um just for the record, so we have planning board members. Um and we have the first alternate sitting as a voting member. Um we have the second alternate, Mr. Rogiro. Um who as an alternate is entitled to participate in all the discussion. Um and do everything up except vote. Um I would ask that we have the other people in the audience, please. Um make sure your your microphone is on mute, so we don't get noise from you, and if you could turn off your camera. John Ragoe, I don't know if you're getting easily turn off your camera, so you can you can watch us, but um. That way we don't have uh the screens, just the people who are there uh participating. Um beyond that, I would, I guess, just um talking about the purpose, uh I think it's there in the agenda as well, and Diane's about to lead into more of that, but. The goal is so that when we leave here tonight. Um Diane and I have clear direction as to what we should be writing in a draft decision. Um which will come before you at the next meeting. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Tice. Now, the way you stated that, you're gonna make up a draft. Is that draft for voting or not?
I'm I'm not sure what you mean.
Are you going, you do you want us to vote tonight?
Um if there is not a consensus.
Right.
We will probably be asking you to vote what we call straw votes. If we're trying to see if we've got, you know, three members who agree on a particular point. Then we would ask you to vote on that, just so we know what the vote's gonna be. The formal decision won't be until the next meeting. But we might have to take votes tonight. I I foresee things that, you know, may split two, two and one. Or two, one, 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 and one with different views among the 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 five voting members tonight. And and we need to know, you know, what will receive three votes, so we can obviously draft the decision that way. Now, whatever you do is not set in stone, we'll be bringing it before you at the next meeting. You'll have, it'll be sent to you ahead of time, you'll look at it. And if you want to make changes at that meeting, you'll be able to as well before you vote on it.
Fine.
Any other questions for me or? Okay. Diane, take it away.
Okay. So I have prepared um to try to help you kind of organize your thoughts. I prepared a matrix. And I also have the master plan that I can share if you need to look at the actual site plan. With any more detail as you go through this. And what I've tried to do is organize this uh into um. The different components of the original zone change conditions. What the waterfront uh PUD requires, which is also known as the waterfront land development project, which was the zoning ordinance that um. Was uh placed um in uh, you know, for this property. And then in two thousand and ten, the board approved a conditional master plan, so I put the conditions from that master plan in the chart. I have then the current proposal, and then I have some uh comments from the department, uh myself, and some recommendations. So I'm just gonna walk through these I they're in, I took them in the order of the um. Conditions from the town council's own change, I thought that kind of made the most sense. To organize them that way, um please, you know, stop me if you have a question or any or any um. Comments, um so what I'm gonna try to do is go through this and then. Um Andy also has this document, and he can, as you, you know, kind of build your consensus. Um we can make notes, and this can kind of become the framework for what we're what we're gonna um communicate back after this meeting. So um and I'm just gonna ask, um Andy, I've made you the co-host. If you see any of the board members with hands raised or looking to comment, can you just? Um let me know, because I can't see the with my shared screen, I can't see the um. The uh the board members. So um the first item is, I think, the most obvious, this was approved for a maximum of ninety-eight dwelling units as part of the town council's own change. The zoning ordinance was subsequently amended, and it specifically references um historic buildings over one hundred thousand square feet, which is. This building in particular, and the number of one unit per two thousand two hundred and fifty square feet.
Diane?
Yes.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm just gonna interrupt you to say, I I think if the there's since there's only six of the board members, if they have something, they should just interrupt. Because I have the same thing with the shared screen, I don't see their pictures. And it's down on the participants, then blocks a lot of the screen. So I think if any of the planning board members have questions, just interrupt.
Thank you, perfect. So.
Sorry.
Just, yeah, that's great, no, it's good, um. So. Again, zoning ordinance was um written with this building in in mind, and again, remember that this is a very, very large building on a very. A very small footprint, a very small long piece of property. So that was how the number, the number of units was calculated, and then the ordinance sort of followed. With the square foot per gross floor area for um for the building. So um ninety-eight units approved by the planning board at master plan, obviously, the current proposal. Is for a hundred and thirty units, which is down from the one fifty-one that was originally submitted. And just comments, recommendations, residential mixed use in the downtown core is supported. Um it it's it brings vitality to the downtown, it's um, you know, something we encourage to keep the the downtown alive. Um providing that it doesn't impact the character of the neighborhood, and that's always the the caveat there. Um I just made a note that the planning board had previously requested density of a hundred and twenty-five units, just to uh kind of. Uh remind you of what you had talked about previously.
Diane, I'm sorry, when did we request a hundred and twenty-five units? That's been talked about, but I don't think we have formally said we'd be okay with a hundred and twenty-five units.
No, I said. I suggested it.
Okay.
Point, point taken, point taken, we can modify that, yes, I think uh it came up at the January meeting. I think Mr. Mergo raised it, and then I think it was repeated again at the last meeting, but you're right, it was not a formal request, you're right.
Diane, can I ask about the uh one unit per twenty-two fifty square feet? That was a a formula that was backed into, and does the current proposal, as you recall, um. Meet that requirement, the the one.
No.
Right?
I don't believe it does, um they have on the plan, I'll have to look um quickly at my table here. The. So it's it's that's the that's the one unit per two thousand two hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area for historic buildings, if you actually. Um do the calculation with the ninety-eight units to prove it's a little more than that, but the proposal is. At the hundred and thirty units, the proposal is for one thousand seven hundred and forty-eight square feet.
One thousand seven, what?
Forty-eight.
Thank you.
And just and just to remind the board, that does not equate to apartment sizes, that's just a way to calculate the density on the property. So that's that, um. So the next uh thing on the list from the zone change was the public access to the waterfront. And it stated that the developer shall construct at his expense a boardwalk all along the frontage of the property. With exact location to be determined as part of the permitting process. Provided that the northern end shall go beyond the property line and tie directly into the town-owned land or public street. Crossing of the Elks parking lot at the southern end is allowed. And um provide extensive use of signs and materials, providing that extensive use of signs and materials. Example, brick or stone walkway railings, etc., makes it clear to the public where it is, no gate is allowed. Limited closing allowed on the same terms as the Stone Harbor Boardwalk. And in the ordinance, there is also a provision, a separate provision, that ten percent of the land. In the development must be public or institutional use, including but not limited to publicly accessible parks, squares, green spaces, waterfront access, interior spaces, public view quarters, and buffer areas. When the board approved this back in two thousand and ten, one of your conditions was that. A detailed pedestrian access plan for the north side of the property be submitted as part of the preliminary application.
Say that again, please Diane.
In two thousand and ten, your master plan approval conditions, uh one of them was that they submit a detailed pedestrian access plan. For the north side of the property as part of a preliminary application. And I think I think the reason for that was um, we wanted it to tie in more directly with the town-owned property to the north, where the Maritime Center is today. And we wanted to just make sure that that was um could be, it could be uh designed with a little bit more detail. So the current proposal has um previous paper walkway in a public access easement on the um. Along the waterfront with a note that reads future walkway connection to property line by Bristol, oops, that's a typo, Bristol Yarn Mill. And then on the southern side, the boardwalk ends at the property line with the Elks. The proposed public access easement equals five point seven percent of land area, which is less than. The ten percent of land that must be public or institutional use. So my recommendation is, I'm sorry.
Tell me how many square feet that is.
Arm, yes, I can, that equals seven thousand four hundred and thirty-eight square feet.
Thank you.
That's from the um developer's plan. So uh my recommendation on this is um, and you've talked about this, I think, both of your meetings. If the parking lot on the corner of church and Thames is dedicated as public parking. I think that would satisfy the ten percent of land that must be public or institutional. That parking lot on the corner is about seventy-five hundred square feet. And I will double check that for you, but um that would give you the ten percent of land. That would be public if you add that with the boardwalk access through the um the back of the property. Um and I would also recommend it um specifically related to the pedestrian access plan. I would recommend your the same condition that you had um from the two thousand and ten approval, where they provide a more detailed um. Plan to connect to the north side at the Maritime Center as part of a preliminary application. I think it shows a note, but I think it would be good if that could be more um more engineered, a bit more engineered. Well, and then I just wanted to make this note, this hasn't really come up in your meetings, but it's it's something I don't want to um lose sight of. We may, we may have actually talked about it in January, but um on the north side of the mill building. The private property line is um. Into the driveway that the public uses to access the Maritime Center. Um we will need an access easement from the developer to continue, uh you know, crossing over that uh property on the north side. I think that's uh evident on the survey plan that was submitted, and I know it came up, um it came up previously, but I don't think we've really focused on it. I just want to make make mention of that. Um. So the next item is affordable housing. The zone change requirement from the town council in oh eight. Required a minimum of ten percent and no more than twenty percent of the units to be affordable. With an option of either fee and loo. On-site or off-site, as agreed to by the planning board during the major land development process. And in the zoning, while not specifically mentioned in the in the waterfront um. P D or land development section of the ordinance, the town does have an inclusionary zoning ordinance that requires twenty percent of uh units. In projects over five units be set aside for affordable um housing. Um there is a twenty percent density bonus allowed under the inclusionary zoning, um if you apply that to the original. Approved density, I don't, I you still wouldn't get to the hundred and thirty that's proposed with this, so.
Well, I'm against that. I'm not looking, I'm not looking for ten percent, I'm looking for more.
Jerome?
Yes.
This is Andy, can can I suggest, let let Diane go through.
All right, oh, I thought.
She's got, and then I think, come back and 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 work on, you know, having the whole board discuss each of these items.
All right.
But let her get through the overview first. Before you start, otherwise, if you start getting into the weeds on any one of them, you'll never get to all of them.
Thank you, and I if you have questions or you need, you know, clarification, please jump in, but I think Andy's right for the actual, what your opinions are about each of these, we can, we can defer till I finish. So um. So when the planning board approved the master plan in two thousand and ten. The um condition was um ten percent affordable, which was ten units, and the um. At that time, the applicant had um decided that they were going to do it either onsite or offsite. The current proposal is for um ten percent, ten units of um fee in lieu. And three units offsite. The fee in lieu amount is forty thousand dollars per unit, which would equal four hundred thousand dollars to um. Go into uh a town affordable housing trust fund, and then um the East Bay CDC would monitor the offsite units. And I want to just, in the comments and recommendations, a part of the chart, so. The ten percent minimum was negotiated with the two thousand and eight zone change. So that the town wouldn't go backwards in the count of affordable units. Um it was understood that we'd like more, but if we had the ten percent, at least we wouldn't go backward, and we're trying very, very hard to improve the stock of affordable housing. The fee in lieu today is also less than the two thousand and eight fee in lieu, because um there was a change in state law, and I explained this before, they. They changed the way the um amount is calculated, and now we have a a forty thousand dollar per unit. Which is different than what it was in oh eight, where we could actually calculate the difference between a market value unit and an affordable unit. My recommendation, and and I think this was brought up at the last meeting, I I'm inclined to um. Agree with, I think Jerome brought this up, my my recommendation would be for fifteen percent affordable, which would equal twenty units. Um I think three units of offsite and then the balance um. Uh seventeen units times forty thousand, which would be six hundred and eighty thousand, a little bit more than what they had offered. I mean, ideally, I would love to see these units set aside in the mill building with East Bay CDC, I know that's not the model for this applicant, so I understand they're. They're they're not um really looking to do that, but um I I really, I really support having the units um built. Um but um I know the board has talked about the fee in lieu of as well. Um commercial space, um there's twenty, two thousand and eight change of zone conditions. There will will be, there shall be no less than twenty-two thousand square feet of commercial space in the building. The commercial space shall be located in the building along Thames Street, north of lot forty-two Plattean, along Church Street. The waterfront and the proposed cart courtyard with a percentage to be allocated uh allowed to be located above the first floor. As agreed to by the planning board during the major land development process. And the zoning ordinance follows and says, in lieu of the required retail and restaurant uses on the first floor. Within fifty feet of the front lot line, the planning board may allow non-residential uses in alternate locations within the building. The planning board may also reduce the gross floor area of such required non-residential uses by up to twenty percent. Um when you approved this in um two thousand and ten, sorry, that's an error on the chart, it should say two thousand and ten master plan approval. Um there was twenty-four thousand six hundred and seventy square feet of commercial space with um some offices or a more of a flex space on the second floor. The current proposal includes oh on six thousand three hundred square feet of commercial. And as I said, the zoning provides that the planning board can reduce the gross floor area of the non-residential by up to twenty percent, which would be seventeen thousand six hundred. Um ideally, there should be more commercials in this mixed-use development, however. Uh I think the board has previously discussed the constraints of doing so in today's economic climate, and and I understand that that's um. You know, that could be a constraint to fill the space if it's created. Um water-related uses, a minimum percentage of non-residential commercial space is to be reserved for water-related uses. For a reasonable timeframe to achieve such uses. This will be further examined and decided as part of the major land development process to the satisfaction of the planning board. When this own change was granted in oh eight, the the town was really um looking for more commercial um space, and especially water-related uses. I think there was a a feeling of loss, um this project came after the Stone Harbor project with with no commercial space, and I think there was a feeling of loss. Of of opportunity, and so the town really wanted to kind of um. Encourage this and and look at the water-related uses um because of this property's location. So it wasn't necessarily um. Hard requirement, it was more of a, you know, encouragement, and if if those spaces um can be achieved, you know, that would be great. The um current proposal has no water relates radiate, sorry, no water-related uses in the current um proposal. Um this was discussed at the January meeting, with I think um Tony Mergo made the suggestion of retail marine store, a retail marine store. Um the me, the we, the marine trades industries definition includes retail sale of marine parts, so that could be considered a. I'm a water, you know, marine-related business. I I still think that um. You know, that could remain open as an option for a few for further consideration in the commercial space. Um the commercial space is is still somewhat flexible in terms of the tenants, so there may still be, you know, um a boat surveyor or a a boat um. Oh, there's another boat broker, you know, that kind of a a use. Um and with the marina there, I think we felt like it was a good, it was a good synergy. Um traffic study. Traffic study, traffic mitigation plan will be required as part of the preliminary plan application for the major land development. Scope of the traffic study will be subject to planning board approval when density and mix of units is determined. Traffic study to be commissioned by the developer with review obtained by the planning board engineers consultant. Fee for the review of the traffic study by planning boards engineer consultant will be reimbursed by the developer. If traffic mitigation is needed, developable developer will provide as a condition of any planning board approval on the major land development. As part of the master plan submission for this applicant, they had submitted the previous two thousand and eight traffic study. With um a current memo from Fasten O'Neil sort of outlining a little bit of an update. Um it was, it 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 was previously discussed, and I would um recommend that the board um make this a condition for preliminary application. I think it was all agreed that it needs to be updated, and that traffic counts should be done uh during the summer season, I think the traffic counts in the oh eight study were um an off-season. Um uh count, which uh we didn't feel was really relevant to the to the. Potential impact. Uh okay, just a few more things, so infrastructure mitigation. The oh eight zone change required a upgrade of offsite sewer and drainage facilities or a fee in lieu of, as well as payment of the INI fee to handle. Increased flow, and that would be a condition of the zone change and paid prior to final approval of. The major land development or within a timeframe is mutually agreed by the town and the developer. When the master plan was approved by the board, there was a condition that. The sewer connection fee and the INI fee be paid prior to building permits. Um the developer has indicated that those fees will be paid, he's given you estimates for them in the um application. I N I fee and annual sewer fee, um the I N I fee will also um. I'm sorry, the I N I fee will be paid, and also all of the existing roof drains that connect to the sewer will be disconnected, so that will really improve the sewer uh capacity. Um and so I would recommend that um the sewer connection fee and the I N I fee be paid prior to the building permits, and. Again, that um all existing roof drains be disconnected from the sewer. Offsite parking. The existing offsite parking lot to the east of Thames Street are connected to the improved property of the Robin Rug Building, I'm reading from the two thousand and eight change of zone condition. The application for the major land development must include this land owned by the applicant as part of the east side of. They. Applicant as part of the east side of Thames as part of the overall development. The planning board will require at parking in excess of that required by the zoning ordinance. And therefore, one of the offsite parking lots must be used for the major land development. This provision does not include the parking lot currently leased by Aiden's Restaurant located at the southeast corner of the intersection of John and Thames Street. So um the current. Application does not include the lot on the corner of Thames and Church. Parking is required for the zoning. Uh hundred and thirty spaces for the residential use in the mill and eleven spaces for the commercial use in the mill. And then there are three existing residential units on Thames Street, which would be uh three spaces. There is a mixed-use building and a commercial building on Hope Street, which would not require parking because it's in the downtown zone. Um parking is proposed inside the building for residential apartments, a hundred and thirty-seven spaces. Um there are also eleven spaces on the north side of the mail property for the commercial uses, and then there's a parking. The main parking lot on the east side has a hundred and sixty spaces for a total of three hundred and eight uh parking spaces. Um my comments and recommendations, so the zoning ordinance in this, in the waterfront zone, the subject um property, the surface parking lot on the east side of Thames is currently in a waterfront zone. The zoning ordinance allows fifty percent uh of the parking to be a small car parking spaces, which would be nine by sixteen. As long as they're adequately signed for a small car parking. All of the parking spaces in the surface lot are would be considered small car, they're nine by eighteen, so they're a bit longer, but they're e- uh equal in um in width. And I did not see any ADA compliant spaces in the service parking lot. The consulting engineer has already reported that some will be needed in the uh parking in the building, believe six were required in the building. Underground parking. Um the zoning ordinance requires driveways to be twelve feet wide and eleven feet is proposed, and it also requires travel lanes to be twenty-four feet and twenty-two, twenty-two feet is proposed. So uh my comment on this is there is more parking provided than is required by the zoning. So I believe the parking could be designed to meet the zoning ordinance requirements. And if they would also um be eliminating the tandem spot, which was reported at your last meeting. And I believe the engineer reported that that would bring the total to two hundred and seventy-six. And I believe the engineer reported that that would bring the total to two hundred and seventy-six spaces. Um, the applicant has indicated that any surplus parking could be used for the Pootens Island Ferry parking, which is needed. I would recommend that the parking be redesigned to have compliant parking and travel lanes and um. Deed restrict that this parking lot would remain surface parking only. For the benefit of the residential units in the Pootens Island Ferry parking as can be accommodated. My understanding now is there's thirty-six spaces that are um available for Putin's Island very. Um, this parking lot shall have appropriate buffers of natural screening and quality fencing, low-level lighting. And we would need a management plan to address snow removal, storm preparedness and general maintenance of. The parking to ensure that the vegetation and fencing remain in good condition. Part of the zone change request also includes a request to rezone the surface parking lot to the waterfront PUD. I think, I think this is inconsistent with the intent of the waterfront PUD, which was intended to rehab the mill building. I know the intent is to um combine the surface parking in the mill as one project and keep it together as a one development, and I I. I would recommend that, um, but I think that you don't need the change of zone to do that. And I think it might make some of the existing buildings on the parking lot property non-conforming as well. Um, as I noted above, I think the condition on the parking to have it deed restricted would accomplish the goal of combining the two properties. And that would be consistent with section um. Twenty-eight dash two fifty-five of the zoning that speaks to off-site parking lot. Um, I would also recommend as a condition for preliminary approval. Um, a pedestrian circulation plan in the parking lot and the driveway from Hope Street should be a a pedestrian walkway only, which I think was previously um agreed to. And the last thing is existing historic buildings. The original change of zone is tied to the existing historic buildings consistent with the Rhode Island Historic Preservation and Heritage Commission. If any historic building or portion is demolished voluntarily or involuntarily prior to final approval. Um, the zoning is void. If demolished after after final approval, the building can only be rebuilt exactly as before without further town council's own change. And this applicant has all existing historic buildings as part of the master plan application and. Is actually um seeking historic tax credits, so that would be an important uh consideration in their application going forward, so. I don't have any other um comments or recommendations on that um condition. And so that is my summary of um some of the history, the current proposal. And then uh comments and recommendations based on um what I've heard at the board meetings and what I what I would recommend. To go forward for this project. So I'll stop screen sharing now, and you can. I guess, open it up for um planning board. Discussion opinions about the different uh topics that we redressed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll I'll start if you like.
Okay, Steve Steve Katz wants to start, and at any point, if you want me to share that screen again or the site plan to orient you onto the uh. The the project uh design, let me know and I'll do that.
Great, thank you Diane. So uh, that was a great summary, uh, I have my own list here. And you hit a lot of the ones that I have on my list, um, so I'm, I'm really kind of focused on ten issues here and I, and. Uh, I think we're all gonna obviously have to talk about each of these as well as your own issues, but I I've got ten. So I'm gonna start with each one. First one is affordable housing. Um, I am not an advocate for, nor will I agree to any payment in lieu. I want to see actual homes, affordable homes. What that percentage is, I don't know. I think we need to talk about what that percentage is, might be fifteen percent, it might be twelve percent as a compromise between ten and fifteen. Um, but I want to see actual affordable homes. Uh, secondly, density. A hundred and thirty is not gonna work for me. I'll agree to ninety-eight. Um, I might agree to a few more than ninety-eight. But uh, I I've listened to what the public had to say, and I think a hundred and thirty is simply way too many homes. Um, and as part of that density, the third issue is on the units. And we did hear from some of the folks uh that spoke previously. Uh, about bedrooms not having windows. I think that's crazy. I think. Each bedroom should have a window and perhaps, and I don't recall. What was in the plan for the ninety, the original ninety-eight that was approved, I I'm going to assume. That each of the bedrooms had at least one window, but I would like to see windows in all of the bedrooms. Um, fourth issue, parking and a lot of points under parking. Uh, number one, the parking underneath the building will most likely be flooded at some point. Um, I would like to know what the developers' plans are with respect to vehicles that get damaged and or destroyed. Because of the flooding, who's gonna be responsible for that? Where will people park? Uh, that needs to be addressed. Uh, I think number two. Uh, under my fourth point, uh, the number of parking spaces is way too many. We've talked about this, it appears that the developer wants to make additional money, and I'm not opposed to anybody making money, but. I think having as many parking spaces that they want is unnecessary. Um, and as part of that, I think they need to make the parking spaces compliant with code. Uh, and that includes ADA parking. Um, and that includes the size, the width of the parking, and the spacing between parking spaces. Uh, number three, deed restriction, I want a deed restriction that prohibits. Any second layer of parking. What I mean by that is it should only be ground-based parking only. Uh, number four, buffering, I want to see prop in the plan, I want to see proper buffering. That protects all of the abutters from noise, from light. Um, uh, these are people that have lived there a very long time, they have very expensive homes, they have beautiful homes. And they want to be able to have uh a peaceful life, living in their homes or in their yards. And so the the uh, the developer needs to address that properly, and that addresses light, noise. Um, and so on, uh, as part of parking, uh, we, and Diane touched on this. There needs to be parking reserved for the folks on Prudence Island. Um, I don't want to see that taken away from them and they're scrambling to try to find proper parking. Traffic, so we talked about, Diane touched on this also, there isn't a current traffic study, there absolutely must be a traffic study. And that's gotta be based on the number of units that we agree with. Right now, I'm looking at ninety-eight. Uh, but I want to see a traffic study that addresses all of our concerns and those of the abutters. Uh, one of my hot points, and I've talked about it in the last two planning board sessions on this particular subject matter. And that is negative revenue. I will not agree to approve this plan. If there is any negative revenue to the town of Bristol, the developer must agree. To uh a plan that has a revenue neutral to the town, preferably a positive revenue to the town. But not a negative revenue, and that can be accomplished perhaps by some type of an agreement that says that if they don't know. What their numbers are today, after this plan is approved, that say for a period of ten years, perhaps longer. After the facility is built and rented out, that they will reimburse the town of Bristol for any negative. Revenue as a result of this development. We, as citizens, as taxpayers in this town, should not ever pay a developer to develop in our town. Lighting, we talked about lighting a little bit, uh, there needs to be a complete lighting plan. We need to see what this looks like and how the, there isn't light pollution with respect to the abutters. Uh, number of variances, this plan has a tremendous number of variances, I'm not seeing any compromises by the developer. And I I think it's just way too many variances. Uh, public asset access, what Diane talked about in her. Matrix uh is spot on, I I want to see a ten percent, not a five-point-seven percent public access plan. And the commercial space, uh, we previously agreed to twenty thousand square feet. This plan, I I thought it was like six, I don't know what the right number is, but I I think it needs to be a little bit more. Maybe not twenty thousand square feet, but I think we should talk about that. So those are my points, I reserve my time. Anybody else?
Well, I I mean, I, I agree with most of what you said. There are a couple of issues that you mentioned that uh, not that I I. I can live with, things that you say you can't live with, I can live with. So, I think you're headed in the right direction, as far as I'm concerned. But let me tell you what what I've got here, I've got, what does the zone change Diane do? For uh that parking lot, is it even necessary?
I don't think it is, um, we we had this conversation earlier on when when it actually was submitted. Um, I see the, I think the intent um was a good one, the intent was to um. Put it in the same zone as the mill, so that it could be forever connected to and tied to the apartment. Um, pro- project, which I think is is worthy, because we didn't, we don't want that to become. Separated, and then you've got people parking on the street because they don't have a parking lot. So I think the intent was a good one, but I just struggle with the need, uh, and also um. The. Flexibility of that zoning was more geared for the mill, not for the surface parking lot, so I think it can stay in whatever zone it's in. As long as you get the covenant, that it be tied to the to the male uh development and that it never be um. Eliminated as a parking lot.
I tend to agree with that, um, so that was. I was just somewhat confused as to what it really meant. The one unit per twenty-two hundred and fifty and their proposals at seventeen fifty or so. Um, I believe that the council originally sort of backed into that number. So I don't think that it has. The weight that would would kill the deal. So therefore, I I, I would be willing to go with more units than what Steve has has suggested. And we can talk about that, the um, the ten percent public access, I think that's an easy fix. They uh, they they uh deed over to the tu- uh, you know, to the town or whatever. Uh, that parking lot at the corner of Church Street, they meet the requirement, the town benefits. Um, so whatever exceptions that might create, I think it it would satisfy me. Affordable units, I I I'm not a fan, um. First of all, I don't think that we are held, I at least I don't believe so, that we are held to what happened in two thousand eight or two thousand ten. So, in some way, we have to live with. Um, we have to come up with a number, um, I agree with Steve, it doesn't have to be the twenty or twenty-five percent. There's a number that we can uh all agree to, uh, but I think it should be um. Affordable housing units, I I'm not a fee and a fee and Lou fan. This is a really a new proposal, and um, you know, I think that. We can be reasonable uh because of size of the project, but um. I think we need to consider some some of that, we can talk about it, and then um. I guess, that's really. That's really uh what I have at this point. Oh, and the negative revenue. For some reason, uh, with the my experience and 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 uh. What I've seen in the past, I think that the numbers that they're proposing with uh. When you, you know, consider the taxes and you consider uh the sewage assessments and 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 that kind of thing. That we are, we're probably not very negative, if that, if negative at all. I I think they did a a reasonable job at coming coming up with that uh economic impact analysis. So, uh, we can discuss it, but but I uh, I um. I tend to have a different opinion of that. That's about all I have.
I'll go next if it's okay. Uh, I made up a kind of like a list, I I call it a wish list. Um, I'm thinking if there was a way that they could decrease the amount of units to one hundred even. And also, besides that, to um maintain the four hundred thousand in lieu of affordable housing and also. Uh, the three units across the street, which would bring them to thirteen, which would be a little over ten percent, if there was a hundred units. Right, um, I'd like to see them keep the proposed parking uh plan, even though I know it's more spaces than needed, but maybe um. Just with the proposed changes that Diane had made in her uh matrix. And uh mainly to protect the abutters uh to the parking lot. With, you know, proper fencing and lighting and shovary to, you know, protect their privacy. And also the lot at the corner of church and things, I know this is kind of repeating, but. You know, if we could work out a deal with the with the developer in the town that they could either donate, sell or do a long long-term lease. Of that parking lot um that we can use for parking going forward. And that's about all I have right now. For ideas.
Okay, I'll uh, I'll go with my concerns here if you'd like to hear them, um. So I think this really breaks down into three things for me, and it's unit count, it's the parking, and it's the affordable component. Everybody never wants to see payment in lieu, they always want to see the units, but. You're not selling these units, you're renting these units, and. You have to audit these, it's just, if it becomes management-intensive for the landlord and burdensome, and I'm not saying they shouldn't, I'm just saying this is part of. Part of it, they've got a, now they've got a, you know, if they've got a, if they rent an affordable unit, they're gonna ask for pay stubs, they're gonna make sure the person qualifies. And they're gonna continue to do that. Did you get a second job? Did you break out of the bracket? Like, it's not just. Here's the lease, here's the rent, you pay me and we get along. So it becomes problematic, and I do worry about. How they're gonna handle that or how we're gonna force them to handle that, okay? As far as the ten percent access goes, um, I'm not as concerned as other members of this board. Um, fortunately, we live in a town that we have really unprecedented waterfront access. Um, we've got a boardwalk that runs from Independence Park, it's gonna go all the way down. Right next door, we've got Fireman's Memorial, then we have Rockwell, then we have the State Street Dock facilities, then we have a beautiful boardwalk that lands us in Independence Park. And then we have the East Bay Bike Path, we also have Cold State Park, so. You know, if they have to give on something or they can't quite make it the ten percent, uh, for me, that's not a deal breaker. The parking lot is a concern for me for a couple of reasons. Well, they want to monetize the parking lot, and I understand that, renting to people who are not tenants in the building makes sense, but. I worry that in the future they'll rent to everybody, and we've given them the unit numbers. Based that they have a parking space for every unit, but if they're charging for that unit and the tenant doesn't want to pay for it, then they're gonna park on the street somewhere. Okay, and we're gonna have a whole problem all over again. So I would like to see. An agreement between the developer and the town that each unit gets a parking space. And that they won't charge for it, if they have to, they can raise the rent, but they're not gonna separately charge for parking for tenants. And that they won't charge for it. If they have to, they can raise the rent, but they're not going to separately charge for parking for tenants. And I would like to see them all to the original code and size that they should be. Now, once you've accomplished that. If you want to have a couple of smaller spots that you rent out to Prudence Ferry, I'm not opposed to that. Okay. As far as the overall unit count goes. I think that I am more in line with what Tony just said. About keeping the affordable across the street if necessary, but keeping that number, I'm comfortable with that number around a hundred, maybe a little more. A hundred and thirty does not work. And I know that they've come back like, well, we dropped it from what we were originally asking for. We were asking for the sky. That was, you know. Not. Based in reality, you know, so. Those are my. Major concerns. The commercial space. Sorry, hearing feedback. The commercial space. This, this is a, we're in a new world as far as retail real estate goes and I don't. Feel that. Commercial space laying vacant is any better than. Doing something different with it entirely. Maritime uses. I think that's just. Not, I don't think that's realistic. If West Marine wanted to be in downtown Bristol, it would have already been here. So I don't think trying to force. The type of use. Is. Is a is is a smart idea. And just to get to what what Steve mentioned about windows in the units. You know, I think that our job as a planning board is to make a plan that meets for the for the town of Bristol. If someone wants to rent an apartment, it doesn't have windows. That's entirely up to them. Or if they want to have a bedroom, it doesn't have windows. That's entirely up to them. It's a difficult layout. It's essentially three or four buildings stuck together by common walls. It's not a perfect box with with four windows on each side that are symmetrically measured out, kind of like the tourist from Mill. It's 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 a different animal. So I'm not opposed to. Their units not having bedroom bedroom windows. And. So I think we really got to get to these people, the consensus here of. You know, unit count, the parking, the affordable component. And the rest. So that's my. Addition to this.
Great. So I think everyone has gone except the chairman Jerome. Your turn.
Does Mr. Rijuriya want to speak? You don't, all right, well.
He's muted. Hang on, Jerome. Richard, did you have any comments to add? If so, can you unmute?
Well, I'm I'm not voting. I don't know. I mean, I have comments, but with no vote. If you'd listen just for a minute. Personally, I'm not in favor of the project. I don't think it's good for the neighborhood. I don't think it's good for the town. I think the number of units are too great. I believe, you know, I think in two thousand eight, when the council put ninety eight. You know, I I hope it had. Some reason, sound reason for doing that. But I I think the only thing that bothers me with regards to the neighborhood is all of the units being rental. And I just worry about. A a large amount of turnover per year and. I always believed that there's pride in ownership and. I think with all of these being rental units, I just worry about the neighborhood. And what could possibly happen in a very nice downtown area of Bristol. That's it. That's it. That's my feelings.
Okay, I'll be at last. I have a couple. That I would like to see. Number one, I go along with. Cats and. Tony. Ninety eight to a hundred. Number two, my favorite is affordable housing. In our book, it states that the affordable housing. Is going to be provided into the building. Itself. Well, we bend a little and tell them that they could go out. But I do not like the ten percent. And. I'm a person that. If you go between fifteen and twenty. Maybe it could. Bend a little. But. This ten percent is out. I mean, this this. Person that owns this. The only, I know he's investing his money. But. He's taking it from the town of Bristol. Because you're going to have. Some Bristol people that are going to go there. And. It it's it, to me, affordable housing is affordable housing. If he comes up with more money. On affordable housing. I would accept it. I accept it. With percentage. That's all I have. Parking. It's the same. But that's mine. My is density. Amount of apartments in the place. In affordable housing.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more. I'd like I go back on this. I there was one other item that I forgot to put in my notes that I just thought about. And that is, and it was brought up by a member of the public either in January or last week's or the last meeting that we had, and I don't recall when, but. There was a a mention that this particular developer has been sued multiple times.
No, that should be brought up here. We'll end up maybe getting sued.
No, but I what I want to just say is that. I think the town needs some type of. Protection. This this will be a. A landmark for this town going forward, long after we're all gone. And I think we need something that protects the town in the event. There is shoddy construction or lead paint or. Mold or whatever, what have you. And I realize that no developer is perfect, no construction company is perfect, but I. This is a massive project, a massive size. A number of people will be living there. And I certainly don't want to see. People complaining, getting sick, getting hurt. Because of a brand new development that we as a planning board approved.
Andy, can I ask, is this, I don't think this is within the board's jurisdiction. I think there's there's mechanisms within the state. If there are contractors that are not performing correctly and so forth.
Yeah, I I do. I I wanted to wait till Steve finished. But I I would concur that this is not something that you you can deal with. We, the town is not liable, so it's not the town's problem. I understand your concern with it, but you will certainly when they come to you for preliminary. They're presumably going to have various environmental studies that they would present to you, phase one and probably phase two. Although even then. They have to meet the requirements for DEM to approve it for residential occupancy. Not necessarily your requirement. So there's nothing you can do about that. You know, there may be testimony if they've been sued. A lot of people have been sued. That doesn't mean. Anything one way or another, but that's. That, you know, that is for the people who buy it to look at the construction. The town's job will be to make sure the building official makes sure that it's built to code. But that's not something that that you can really deal with at this time. The other thing too, I just while we're taking something off the table, I would like to take off the table the question about the bedroom windows. Again, I don't think that's something that if they meet code, I don't think that's something that the board should get into the question of designing units or whatnot. If they can't rent them, they can't rent them. The fact of the matter is actually the layout of this place is similar to. American Tourister. And almost all the units in American Tourister have windowless bedrooms and apparently are occupied. The. The fact is what they've done is they've created the lofts. Those aren't legally bedrooms. They can't call them a bedroom. Because they don't have a second way out. They're opening up the stairs and do it. As a practical matter, most people will probably use the loft as their bedroom. And they'll probably use the windowless rooms as spare guest bedrooms or offices or things like that. But a- as long as they meet the code, the it's not up to the planning board to design people's property. I mean, you know, if someone came into you and, you know, had a. You know, houses on subdivisions and, you know, it might be one thing to say, we don't want any windows on this wall because you're too close to the neighboring property. But it's not us for us to say you must have more windows as long as they meet the codes.
Fair enough. So so Andy, thank you. I I appreciate the legal insight on that. Thank you.
So the rest of the stuff is, you know, all stuff to to talk about. And. You know, I I just want to digress a little bit because I I do think the concern about the flooding of the parking under the building. Is is a valid concern of the planning board. Not so much the damage issue, who's going to pay for it if it happens, but certainly if you want to say, okay, what's your contingency plan? There's a hurricane. Warning posted. Where are those people going to park? Because if we have a hundred cars more that are looking for places to park on high ground in Bristol and we have a parking van in Bristol. On the streets, you know, I I think that's a legitimate question to ask.
Agreed.
That's all I've got for now.
Diane. I have a question on.
I do. I'm sorry. I I just want one more looking at my notes here. One other thing I wanted to say, because I think actually Armin was talking and just mentioned this and. I would like to make clear you do not, you are not bound by the master plan decision. From two thousand and ten, that expired. You can look at it. This is an example of what was approved before. But you're not in any way bound by it even to approve the same thing that you approved back then. You are somewhat bound by the two thousand and nine zoning for the zoning change by the town council because that's what the zone is for the property. But it's a quid pro quo. If if you're bound by it, so so are they. If they came in with a proposal that had ninety eight units. Then you would have a lot less discretion at what you were reviewing. It's only because they're going for more than that. And since they are wanting to open it up, now you do have the discretion. If they want it changed for more than ninety eight units. Then you have the discretion to ask for the other changes that you want to accompany it.
Diane, now. We are, we're required by the next meeting to make a decision one way or another unless they are, we ask for an extension, correct?
Yes, the. The timeframe runs out, I believe, April twenty second. So it'll be at your next meeting unless you have a special meeting or unless you get an extension from the developer.
Okay, so. Just say, for instance, that. They did get master plan approval. What what is the next step? Is it to go to the zoning board?
No, not the zoning board, Tony. They've got to get the town council to approve the amendment to the change of zone conditions.
Okay, and then the zoning board?
No, well, I. I guess it depends on on what you're what you're voting on here with the so. Right now, the only relief that they need are variances to the parking lot. No, there's some variances to the. What the. Land development project as well. I think what we were, what I was contemplating was that. If you see fit to move this forward. The zone change would incorporate any. Modifications. So that they don't have to go to the zoning board as well, if that makes sense, sort of like any zoning, any zoning. Cleanup or changes that would be. Necessary would be part of the town council's action rather than a separate zoning board. Action. That's that's what I was anticipating. I don't know, Andy, if that's a procedural. Question as to whether or not the council can. Amend the zoning ordinance. Not only the conditions from the oh eight. But anything new to go forward without needing zoning board relief.
Theoretically, they could. Yes, if if they're opening up and amending the ordinance, they could. Amend it. Any way they want.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Speak here. So. The whole purpose of this meeting was to give them a direction. To go in that. We feel if they came back with something shaped like what we're about to decide tonight, that. They would have a better chance at having success. And I want to try to. Continue with that. So. Diana, read and make a motion or do we tell you what I think would be reasonable that I would. Vote yes to, or we're trying to get a consensus here because. I I'm looking at this as. You know, I'm comfortable with a hundred and five units maximum. I would like to see, I would need a deed restriction on the parking lot. And also not to change the zone of the parking. So deed restriction to keep it surface parking. Full size parking spaces for each and every number of units you have. The affordable. Component, I'm I'm fine with what I call a fifty fifty, which is fifty percent in lieu and fifty percent. Of whatever percentage amount we decide be within the scope of the project. Whether that's across the street is fine with me. Affordable units are affordable units. And a. Where were they on the plan, Diane, with the amount of public access? We're asking for ten to bear it where?
Right, so they're at five point.
Seven. Five point seven, Diane.
I I'm.
But I'm sorry. Yes, I mean, you're correct. Five point seven.
I'm okay with the five point seven, providing that there's an easement for the access to the maritime center.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? There are several items that you outlined and. Brian is going through several of them. Why don't we take each of those? Separately. And take a straw vote.
That's fine with me.
So we'll have it. Go ahead.
Yeah, I I don't know that we have to go through a lot of this here. It seems to me we have. All five of you. Don't seem to be, the the maximum number of units I get out of the five of you is a hundred and five. Just now from Brian.
How do they do that?
The way you're talking. So. Given, given that also. Seems like all five of you are unhappy with what they've offered for the affordable housing. I don't, sometimes it's easy or sometimes it's feasible. To have a decision with conditions. Okay, we'll approve it. But subject to this many. So for example, if you were all in step and you all thought a hundred and twenty five units would be okay. I could see, all right, a decision to approve, but condition not more than a hundred and twenty five units. That's not a big change from a hundred and thirty, so forth. But things are so far apart from what's applied for, even as amended and what you want. I think the appropriate thing here to do would be just a motion to deny. And and, you know, we'll we'll come up with the fact findings based on, you know, the elements and the concerns that you've raised. But that seems to be the easier way to do it. I don't see that we're. Even if we get a consensus among all five of you, it's going to be so different that it's not going to be effective. How are we going to do a master plan? Decision that says better buffering? You know, and and we do have, we appear to have some discrepancies among you as to the parking. Yes, somewhat less parking somewhat, but you want to keep the parking for Prudence Islanders. So, you know, we can't design their parking lot on the fly for for them based on those conflicting goals. So based on what I've heard, I think a a motion to deny would be what you'd be. Or a motion directing us to draft a motion to deny seems to be where you're going.
Andy, I I kind of agree with you. I think. Andy, I I kind of agree with you. I think that makes a lot of sense. It seems like a a decent consensus. I have one question, though. On the affordable housing component. Some of us have said a payment in lieu or partial payment in lieu, I I I said, build them. Uh, Brian brought up an interesting point, and Brian's point was since these are going to be rentals. That the affordable housing, if the ones that they build would also have to be rentals, is that true? Or could they actually be homes that they sell as affordable houses?
Well, the problem is, it's, i- it is being set as rentals because they're getting federal historic tax credits.
Yeah, okay.
They can't sell for five years, no matter what.
Right.
Um, now, the model of this company historically, most of their places.
Andy, this is Diane. Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah, please.
I think, I think Armin fell off.
Oh.
I don't see Armin anymore.
Okay, whoops.
He fell off like right, right while you were talking.
Oh, I had that effect on people.
Was the, it was the the internet, the interweb.
All right, let's hold on then, all.
Let me just mute, let me just mute. Mute myself and.
He's back.
He's back. Welcome back, Armin.
Yeah, am I the only one that went away?
Yes, we 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 paused because we saw you, we we saw that you dropped off, so.
Diane noticed you fell overboard and stopped the ship. I was answering the question about uh. Rental versus the ownership and what I was saying was. I I don't think you could split it apart. I think if they're rental, then they're they're affordable would be rental because. They are using federal historic tax credits for this. So they are going to be required to rent it for at least five years. And for what it's worth beyond it, the. The modus operandi of this company has actually been to rent things long term, even beyond the five years. Now, that being said, I don't know that that's such a a greater burden. To rent it. There is, there's another mill from the Karen family in Fall River. That had a mix of affordable and market housing, and in a way, it sometimes allows more flexibility. You know, this one unit can become vacant, another unit can be substituted as the affordable unit and so forth. Um, it does require paperwork that can be delegated either to an agency or can be done. So I I don't think it's a such asshole there, but I do think if they would have to be. The same, if they're rental in the main, if they're rental for the market. Um, at least all the onsite ones would need to be rental as well. Maybe the offsite, if they decided they wanted to do it as a sale thing, that could be done, that would be up to you to decide. I I don't think you have to get into any of that now because it's, it's clear that you're so far apart on the number of units. And so far apart from the developer on any movement on the affordable, I I don't know if you need to get into deciding what you would accept at this point.
But let let me just throw this out. If they may be willing it's uh to give, I I we can approve it or deny it. But what I'm saying is, for as an example, let's say they said, well. We'll give you uh the percentage that you want for affordable housing and we'll and we'll put it. Uh, in the building as an example. That would make me very flexible in terms of the number of units. I I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel like I was held to the hundred and five or the hundred or ninety-eight. That that uh Brian had mentioned. Uh, there were some things that can happen that would make me comfortable with other issues. If they gave up, I mean, I, you know, I don't have a big problem with the seven thousand square feet that they have for. Um, this open space, but given the fact that they would uh do something with the parking lot at Church Street. Makes me feel a whole lot comfortable about making that exception. Uh, including only sixty-three or whatever it was uh square feet for commercial. I I can get. I I can probably go along with something like that, uh because I don't want to see. A bunch of other space in 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 town vacant. So. I, that's why I suggested we go through the issues to see where we have differences. And if uh one of us or or several of us may suggest something that would make others feel comfortable. While s- something that they're up in the air about. Yes, we can deny it, and I have no problem. If we don't like the project the way it is, saying no, uh, we're not doing it. Just as, you you know, we can walk away if we'd like to. Uh, but I think something should be done, and I just like to come out, come. Get at what it, what it is. It may not work for the developer. And I understand that, but. Give give them an opportunity uh based on what we think we would approve. Uh, without them having to take other steps. That's all I have.
Yeah, I agree with Armin in a sense that it seems like it's about five things that. This board is really, really looking into. In something like the commercial land, I I wish they don't even have any because. You go up and down thing, a whole street, and there's more vacant buildings there for businesses. But we're gonna, I want to stress. On what this company is going to do with low affordable housing. And if they come out, I like that figure of a hundred people, a hundred apartments, so. If they come out with a sensible figure, I would go along with it. I'm not worried about. Too many other things. Because it seems like they're there already. I mean, with these parking lots. The only thing, why, why I think he wants waterfront. Is because they come under a different program of getting money. To fix his parking lots. That's his business, but. Like Armin stated, something is going to be, we, we voted against this. And the guy don't know why we voted against it. We voted against this whole con. Is he got anything, does he want to change? To benefit himself as a building in the town of Bristol. That's what I got.
Well, I guess, I guess the first thing is that the developer and there's just people are watching you now. So they've heard everything for the last hour and a half, so they've heard it right from the horse's mouth. And um, it's being recorded, um, so hopefully, if anybody wanted to watch it again, they could. Maybe we want to leave it at uh at least a motion for us to deny. But if you want to take another half hour to try to see if we could narrow it down. To to what a majority would agree, um, so they'll have that guidance if they're gonna come back. Or if they wanted to ask for continuance to substantially revise.
As the chairman of the board, I think we should stay another half hour and try to. Write down something that they know we're saying and what we're looking for.
So that, and along with that, we'd have to come a re- a request for a continuance because otherwise you're going to have to take action at the next meeting.
Right.
And so we we just, I just want to remind you that that's another step that we have to get to if if they're going to try to. Meet the um. Parameters that you're setting forth tonight.
I mean. I'm not, I'm not in favor of denying this tonight. Right now, you know, I I think we should, I think we should wait, they'll listen and and see if they come up with some concessions to what we've been saying. Anthony, I think, I think what Andy was trying to say was that we should draft a motion to deny in preparation. That they don't come up with something for us next month, not to flatly deny it tonight.
Is that, but it should be a consensus of what we don't, don't like or we do like.
Right, so what what we would do is draft a motion to deny, which you would then consider at your next meeting. Unless they come in and request a continuance. Um, because they want to change it. So, so let's talk then about the things about about what what would get approved. A approximately about a hundred units seemed to be the number. Armin, you were willing to go up a bit if they were going to provide affordable, so like if if they provided ten affordable apartments. You would go to a hundred and ten, is that what I'm hearing?
Ye- yes, I would, I would go up based on the number of units they're willing to put in that building.
So if they wanted to put a hundred and thirty, if they had. If they had. Thirteen affordable of the hundred and thirty, would you be okay with a hundred and thirty units?
Well, I I think that 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 number of units is probably low for the rest of this group, but um. The answer, to answer your question, I would go up to the point, depend. I think we should resolve the issue about affordable housing first. And that will tell me how many units I would exceed uh Brian's or or uh Steve's recommendation.
Well. I speak. On affordable, on the uh. Apartments. No more than a hundred and five apartments.
I agree.
All right, so.
Who was that who just said I agree? I'm sorry.
Steve.
Okay.
That was, that was me, Andy.
Okay.
All right, I I had, I had mentioned possibly one hundred units and uh. Ten in lieu of four hundred thousand, and then the three across the street. So that would be thirteen, so that would be thirteen percent, I I believe.
No.
Yes, it would be thirteen percent.
Yeah, you're right.
How many um? Tony, I I I like where you're going with this, but the question I have is how many bedrooms are those units across the street? Uh, that, one of, one of them is a single-family house, and one of them is a two-family. Okay, so. You know, when we talk affordability, I mean. In 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 light of recent situations with rent in the state of Rhode Island post-COVID, but prior to that. We kind of always thought about children, you know, so making a one-bedroom affordable. Unit isn't really across, I mean, I'm I'm trying to maximize for the developer, maximize for the affordability point component, but. I don't know if having one bedroom, like, I'm not sure if there's a ma- if there's a a balance for that, Diane, that we have. Or does it, is there, is there a certain number, like, bedroom count for affordable, or can we make a one-bedroom affordable unit?
You could make a one-bedroom affordable unit that would um. The rent obviously would be prouided based on the fact that it's a one-bedroom and it's not, you know, a family.
No, no, I understand that. I was just wondering if there was a, okay.
Jerome, wh- what's the number that you're looking for for affordable units? And and what percentage and?
All right, number one.
Clears up some stuff.
I'm looking for a hundred and five, a hundred units, a hundred and five units, tops. I'm looking for the new thing, it, affordable housing in Rhode Island is twenty percent. I won't, I don't say go twenty. Tony come up with thirteen, I'll say fifteen and that's it. No less than fifteen percent. Money-wise. So I'm talking about fifteen units.
All right, so that would come out to four hundred and eighty thousand in lieu of. Right, and then the three or, and then the three or four across the street.
Right.
But Jerome, are you okay with fee in lieu of or? Combination of that, um, or do you want to see all units? I'm not, I'm not sure.
No, no, if they want to buy houses on the street or anyplace else. As long as it's that many units.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but they're only talking three units. They're not talking.
Well, then it's coming with money.
Okay, but so you would be okay with the combination of money and units, okay?
Not, no less than fifteen percent.
Oh, okay, equivalent to fifteen percent, okay. How do the others feel about that?
I guess I'm okay with it. I I'm okay with it and I would, you know. Again, I I I want to just revisit the number of units. But. I'm more okay with that than at this point than anything else.
So, can I just, I'm sorry, can I just interrupt for a minute, Steve? So, what what I heard was a hundred and five apartments. Fifteen percent affordable, which is by my calculation sixteen units. Um, one oh five. One oh five times fifteen percent is like fifteen point seven five, so you round up, so sixteen affordable.
Right.
Three on the ground.
Right, and fifteen percent of thirteen. Right?
Yeah, so that'd be five hundred and twenty thousand in lieu of.
Correct.
Right, and then the three units across the street would be fifteen percent of one oh five.
Correct.
Six, eleven, thirteen units times forty thousand, right?
Yes.
Five twenty, yeah, you're right.
Five twenty.
Right.
I will ag- I will agree to that.
What's the rest? What's the rest of the board on this?
I mean, one more time on that affordable count, you just, you just said.
He said fifteen percent, so that's sixteen units.
Okay.
So he's saying three across the street, thirteen that they could pay. A fee in lieu, which is five hundred and twenty grand.
Okay. I can support that.
I support it.
Tony, you said yes to?
Yes, I did, yes.
All right, so and. At least we're on our way giving them something that they can say.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting the.
We can't do that, we'll do it.
Hopefully, uh, they're taking notes here.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Richard, of course.
So if they decide not to pay the money, then you're going to have fifteen or fourteen in that area.
No, that could happen in the building, Richard.
Would that be correct?
In the building, right?
So if they decide.
So you would have. Twelve in the building and three across the street if they decide not to pay the five hundred and twenty thousand. So you'd have a total of fifteen affordable units. In the, in that, that project.
Richard, it would be sixteen units.
What's that fifteen?
Sixteen, one six.
How many?
One six, sixteen.
Oh, well.
And I don't believe it has to be section eight. I think it just has to be. Affordable, affordable.
Yeah, it's not section eight at all. It's just people that are earning the.
I'm not saying it's section, I'm not saying it's section eight. I didn't say that.
Okay, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
No, no. That's the only question I had. Okay, thank you.
The other, the other thing is uh. I'm interested in uh either no zone change or a zone change with some heavy restrictions. About the parking lot across the street. And I'm interested in trying to squeeze as much the the ten percent of space that we want for. um, I, I don't know how it stated in the audience, but we're looking, we would look for ten percent. And I think that we can get that with that parking lot, um, uh, at, at Church Street, and I'd like to see that. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry about the parking lot, the ten percent as far as the public space?
The public space, right, it, with, with the boardwalk, we have, what, we, whatever we said, five point seven percent. If we added that parking lot from, uh, from, um, the corner of Church Street with, uh, either some, I don't know, some kind of a deed restriction.
I, I, I feel like we're, there's, there's been this kind of underlying thing, uh, with this parking lot at the corner of, um, Church and Thames, and I've been kind of just letting it run up my shoulder, but I feel like this isn't something that we're going to strong arm.
Well, here's, here's the thing, Brian.
If they want to, I mean, hold on, hold on, I mean, if they, if they meet, if they come close to what we have, we have enough public access already, and they give us the easement to get to the Maritime Center. If they want to hold that parking lot and rent it out, or block it off like it is now, I mean, we, you know.
That's the problem, it's blocked off.
No, I don't think it will be forever, and I think that, you know, thinking we can do a better job with private property than they can is probably not a good idea.
I, I, I hear you, I, I, just my opinion, um, we, if, if you guys don't want that, then, then that's fine, but I'm just trying to squeeze something out of this for us. And.
And, yeah, you're headed in the right direction, I think, and, and, but I also agree with Brian. I, I just want to see the, the, the greater public access. So how that happens?
Can't, it can't. There's not enough room behind that building. I mean, that could be a deal killer if you're looking for that ten percent and there's not enough room back there.
So, I, I hear you. So maybe what we write in the findings of fact is that the board wants to see more public access and ask the developer to give us a proposal on how they can do that. Let, let them tell us.
Yeah, I, well, I guess you're right. They could buy the Elks, I guess.
They could.
I mean, if you're giving, if they're okaying a pedestrian access from Hope Street through that parking lot.
That, that does grant some of it, yeah.
That does grant some of that ten percent.
Yeah, so I'd like to just see the developer make a proposal to us, understanding that this is, this is a, a hard point for us. You, you developer, tell us, how, how can we get close to this, this public access requirement that we want?
I, I, I'm okay.
I heard someone mention, uh, that parking lot being, uh, blocked off, uh, that's because the town only has a six month lease on that. It goes from, uh, I'm not sure exactly when, but maybe April until November or something like that. That's why it's blocked off right now. But as far as going forward, I believe the town has a lease, is going to lease that again this summer.
So they only lend it for, for the silent?
No, no, that's public parking. It's leased, leased to the town six months a year, sixteen hundred dollars a month is what I was told.
Not bad.
So Armin, what, what did you say? You wanted to make that parking lot part of their, uh, public access?
What I was thinking is, they were short on the, the public access.
Public access.
Um, if they added that lot to it, it would, it would, it would meet that ten percent number. So why not? And in my opinion, in order to get to ten percent, so yes. I, I guess effectively I'm saying, I'm okay with the lack of space or whatever space they have in the back in terms of giving us, giving us access. But since, since one of the requirements is, uh, for a building like that is they give us ten percent, let's find us some place else. I found it at Church Street.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I agree with you on that. I mean, I, I think the boardwalk, you know, along the waterfront is a pretty sizable investment and, I mean, you, you can't compare that to like, you know, other types of access that, maybe that they could come up with. I mean, you know.
I'm just looking for space that I knew was available.
Right, I, I, I agree with you.
And, and just to make a distinction, as, as Andy might say, just to make a distinction, it's, um, it's ten percent, ten percent of the land for public institutional use. And that includes what we're talking about, public access parks and so forth. So it's not just the public access piece, but I, I, I just want to make that clarification, but I think that's, it sounds to me like that's what you are focusing on, is the public access, which is, which is fine, and you're asking them to tell you how they're going to meet that ten percent, um, which is fine, but I just want to make that distinction. It's, it's not just the public access. It's public institutional use.
Right, which, which would cover the, the parking lot that would, that would also do that. Um, they could also conceivably provide public amenities within the mill complex. If they're not having commercial space, there could conceivably be interior commercial amenities, uh, public institutional amenities.
Well, that's true, especially if we only allow a hundred or a hundred and five units. They'll have more, they have the room.
Yeah, so I, I agree. So I think we add, we tell them, okay, this is what we need. You come before us and tell us how you're going to reach it.
Right, and I think I also wanted to comment, I like Brian's idea of the, the access to the waterfront on the, on the, um, driveway down to the Maritime Center. I mean, that could probably be added to that as well.
Yes.
I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay with that approach.
I mean, I don't know if we, I, I, I think this is a, this ten percent thing is, we're going to make them have a, build a meeting room for people that no one will use because we have one at the library already that seldom, you know, doesn't get used as much as they thought it would. I mean, to me, it's, you know, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, but I don't, I don't know. I, I think we're getting a little off. To me, I think it's unit count, parking lot, affordability, and I think that, uh, the, the parking lot has got to be deed res, we're going to have some restrictions on that parking too. The scope and size of the spaces and most importantly, but, you know, when I asked them at the last meeting, you know, are these unit, will you ever have these spaces just for the apartments? Like, will each space get, each unit have an, each apartment have a parking space that won't be charged addition? They, they didn't really give us a straight answer, so that's.
Well, I think, I think Sean did. He said that, if I can recall, I think Sean addressed that because it was brought up the meeting before and said that, eh, with, you know, with a regular striping, a regular size and so on, without exceptions, they, if, if, they would still end up with twenty six, I mean, uh, two hundred and forty-five or two hundred and sixty spaces. So I, I think Sean, uh, Martin, uh, addressed that at the last meeting.
No, what I'm trying to say is, I'm, I'm trying to see if they're going to charge for parking for the tenants on top of rent.
Well, you could, you could ask this.
I, I think, I think they charged, they, they did provide this information with American Tourister, and I'm assuming it would be the same model, that they, they don't charge if people want to have an unassigned space outside. They're entitled to park outside without paying extra, but if they want a covered space, if they want a space in the basement.
I understand the garage spaces are, are, are extra. But I just don't want, I don't want someone renting an apartment and saying, hey, I don't want to pay for parking, so now I'm going to park in front of someone's house.
Park on the street, yeah. I, I, I mean, we can ask for the clarification, but I think that is in fact part of their plan, that they, they do allow the parking, uh, space, they, whatever they give a pass or whatever for the, the lot outside.
Okay, I think that's the direction that we're giving them.
Yeah, alright, and traffic study, we need a current traffic study and this would be based on a hundred and five units.
Are we going to have higher traffic study, man, and let them pay for it? Or, uh, I mean, are we going to go along with her traffic study?
No, we, we would have to send it out to a peer review engineer and they would have to review it and report back to you. That's how we do it, uh, for all, all, any development that requires a traffic study. And they reimburse the town for the cost of that.
Alright.
Peer review.
And I think we need to address the, uh, it was, it was a very strong theme by a lot of the abutters on buffering in the parking lot across the street. So we need to address that. We need to give them some guidance in our findings of fact on what we want to see.
Dave, what do you want to see?
Well, I think what we want to see, uh, and I, as I recall, a number of the folks that abut that particular parking lot said they want to see a fence and, um, uh, buff, some type of buffering from, uh, trees or, or bushes or something that, that, uh, reduces noise, reduces light pollution, um, obviously, we also, as part of that, we want to see a lighting plan so that we know what they are envisioning for that parking lot, um, so that the folks that go out in their backyard at nine o'clock at night are not seeing bright lights and things like that.
I think they talked about lighting at the last meeting, the lighting for the parking lot.
They did, Tony, but, but I think we need to see as part of this approve, if, before we approve something, we need to see a lighting plan.
Right, no, of course.
Would that be something though that you could, I mean, I would think that would be something that it would be, master plan would be conditioned upon. A lighting plan is really a, a preliminary plan item. Um.
Fair enough, Andy, yeah.
And, and a landscaping plan too, lighting and landscaping is part of preliminary.
Right, but I think what you are looking for at master plan is some more space along the edges of the parking lot in which they could put that landscaping. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I agree with that.
Anything else?
Um, alright, and my, you know, I have my concern about the, uh, the negative revenue. I don't know how we address that. I, I'm just, I think we, I would like to see at least something in the findings of fact that we do have concerns about negative revenue that the town could experience. Well, how about, how about again, that for preliminary plan, that, um, a, uh, an economic impact report that we would also want to have peer reviewed, that would show no negative impact.
Agreed. Yes, thank you.
I think the reduction in density that you're suggesting would help get you there too, with the, you know, fewer.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, can I just go back to the parking? I, I may have missed something, but did you already, um, make, um, state no, no variances, so parking would be per the size and space, the spaces and, and, um, dimensions per the coordinates?
Yeah, I think, I think Armin said that and I agree with it. Yep, um. Oh, and the other thing is, I, I want to see a deed. Could we just, before you move off that, could we clarify, when you're talking about the no variances in the parking, you're talking about the outside spaces. The ones inside in the basement are very likely going to need variances because of all the columns and everything like that. Are you okay with that, that they get variances for the garage parking sizes and stuff?
You know, I, I think give them the benefit of the doubt, um, if we said all parking spaces, um, they would come up with a number that, a final number that, that will, will make some decisions, will help us make decisions about buffer zones and so on and so forth, if they could, if they can be expanded or not. So I would say all the, all the spaces, but that, you know, I, you know, I can live with, um, the ones that are hidden inside, uh, making some exceptions.
Yeah, I, I must think would be, if, if they can, as Armin said, make some exceptions for the inside spaces so that you can minimize, you know, the off, the off-street, um, you know, the surface parking.
I, uh, the inside park, and I think they got to go back to, to a regular size with, uh, double lines, if they're going to have more spaces.
I, I think that the construction plan and the column spacing in there limits their ability to do that, you know what I mean? So I think there was like kind of a.
Yeah, you would have almost no, you'd probably have hardly any spaces at all inside the garage.
Alright.
If you, if you require that, I mean, and then, then, and then that's putting more pressure on the outside, less for Prudence Island, less room for buffering.
Yeah.
Right, so I, I can live with that.
Yeah, I, I can live with that. Uh, the one thing I do want to add though, on the subject of parking, and this would be for the outside parking, is a deed restriction that they cannot go above the ground. In other words, it's ground parking only.
I think you have that if you don't allow the zoning change on the parking lot.
No, I think, I think you need to add that, um, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a given.
Alright, so let's, let's do that, please.
And I think you had also talked about, um, a form, a management plan for both parking lots in terms of storm preparedness, snow removal, maintenance of the, of the vegetation and the fencing and, and so forth, and I, I would recommend that be a condition for preliminary.
I agree.
Is that, hold on, is, is that, um, is that over and above what is required right now?
Um, the order, the, the requisites don't, that's, that's a, a special planning board request, so I suppose if you wanted something now that you could, um, yeah, yeah.
So the library has that?
No, but Brian, I think part of the point is, and we talked about it when I initially raised the issue, is what happens when the underground parking floods, and it will flood at some point. Where do these people go? Where, where, where are they expected to park their cars?
On the town common.
The town common, Chestnut Street. There's plenty of places to park in, in, in a, in a, in a hurricane emergency. I'm not really thinking that should weigh that heavily. I'm more worried that, I don't want to necessarily, you know, we're, we're reducing the parking spaces because we don't, you know, we, we don't want a, you know, bumper car situation going on or, or, or double tandem parking. But I also don't want to create a special kind of drainage condition that they're the only people in town that have to do, and they're going to incur a tremendous amount of cost for this.
Yeah, I understand.
Because we feel it's right. If we haven't done it for the library and we haven't done it for Stone Harbor and we haven't done it for anybody else, I don't think there should be anything on top of what's required. That's all I'm saying.
I understand.
I agree, I agree, Brian.
Yep, alright.
Is anybody else good at anything?
I, 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 I just want to make an overall comment. I think this was a great session. I think we all got to talk through our different thoughts and uh, I appreciate it. Thank you. So, I just want to clarify procedurally wa- wise, we're, we're not drafting a motion to approve with all these conditions.
Right.
But what we are going to draft, because you'd want to see the plans and stuff, what we will do is draft a motion to deny. And unless if the, if the developer wants, they know now what would be approved, then they should approach it about getting a continuance and extending the time for decision so that they could come in with a plan that meets these conditions.
Yes, that's a good direction.
Yes, I agree.
For you, um, thank you. I, I think this is great too, and before you, and, um, we, the one thing we didn't touch yet was the boardwalk design. You talked about, um, and maybe this is a condition for preliminary as well, to show the transition to the town property on the north so that it connects well with the, uh, Maritime Center property. Is that something you want to recommend for preliminary design?
Well, I mean, it's part of, it's an integral part of the plan, so that, that, that should be included.
Yes, yes, please.
Want to take a straw vote? Diane?
I, I don't think you need to unless, uh, unless you've got, unless you've got a problem. I mean, we've heard what you said, um, I think, and got it down.
That, that would be the, that would be at the April meeting, I think.
Let, let me make sure, let me recap.
You want me to do it?
We've, we've given them all, the direction that this board thinks is necessary to get an approval. Their obligation at this. Their obligation at this point is to either come back with what we're looking for or an extension to figure out how to do that. Or we're prepared to deny it at the next meeting, and you'll draft that, that, that that for us. Is that, is that about summarizing?
Yes.
But, but yeah, we'll have that for you. We'll have the denial at the next meeting if they don't have, if they haven't come in requesting the continuance and offering the extension of time. I, I don't see how they'd be able to revise their plans this substantially between now and the next meeting. But if they come in with a request for continuance and an agreement to extend the time, then we would continue it. We would not be voting on a motion to deny at the next meeting. If we don't hear from them, then you'll have the motion to deny in front of you.
Okay, I got it.
And, and I'm just going to hit the high points here. A hundred and five units with essentially a fifteen percent affordable component comprised of three units across the street and five hundred and twenty thousand dollars payment in lieu. The parking, no variances for the outside spaces. Deed restriction about no above-ground parking. And increased buffering in the lot so that they can have more room for landscaping. We'll, we'll wait till preliminary plan to see the landscaping plan, but on master plan, we want to see that extra room where they're going to plant that landscaping. Likewise, lighting plan would be a condition of preliminary. As far as the opens or open or public institutional space, you want to see ten percent, but you're leaving it to them to show how they would get to the ten percent. And the economic, you want for preliminary and economic development plan that we would have peer reviewed and after approval by peer review must show no negative impact. The traffic study, that's, that's other stuff. The only big thing, what about the commercial space? The requirement for how much commercial space? What's, what's the, I don't think we talked about a consensus on that.
I'm okay with it because I don't want to see more space.
You're okay with what? With not having any?
Their proposal.
Their proposal of, okay. How does the rest of you feel?
I, I, I agree with Armin.
Me too.
Yep.
Same here. Same here.
Okay, good, that's easy. I think that's it. Diana, we missing anything else?
Yeah, the parking lot, the corner of Church and Thames.
No, Tony, we're going to ask them how they're going to address that ten percent plan, right? And that's.
I think, I think they've heard you enough to know that that's something you'd like, but we're not going to require that. We're going to, we're going to leave it to them to determine how they're going to get to that ten percent. That would be an easy way for them to get to it.
That's right. It, it gives them an opportunity. That's all they have to do if they want to, and they'll meet that requirement. And we win.
We're not in this to win.
Well, no, I mean, the town wins in, in, in that, in that it gets.
Wow.
Well, I, I kind of, I am in this to win. I, I want to win for the town and for the.
What we want was best for the town. That's agreed.
Right, that's right.
Andy, the only thing we added, the only thing we added at the end was the design for the connection to the boardwalk on the north side, and I think I heard the board say they, they wanted that.
Okay, at master plan. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think there might be a, a lot of more other boilerplate conditions that we'd have that would include, you know, requirements for preliminary when this, we're just hitting the big ones that affect the design and, and cost elements here.
And some of the big ones that we didn't really have a consensus on until now, so, yeah.
Right.
Good, okay.
Well, I'm happy with where we are tonight.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, so do you need a motion for, to prepare the denial? I'm prepared to give you that motion.
Sure.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we prepare a preliminary denial in case we need it for next month's meeting if the petitioner does not come in with a request for an extension or a modified plan.
I'll second.
Okay, so, I'll do roll call. I made the motion, Steve seconded it, so we'll do this, let's see, I lost my sheet, but I'll try to see alphabetically here. Steve Katz.
Aye.
Tony Mergo.
Aye.
Armin Biladi, wow, I don't know my alphabet tonight. Brian Clark.
Aye.
And Jerome Sfotrito.
Aye.
Do we need a motion to continue this to the April meeting?
Yes, we do.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Steve made a motion, Brian seconded it.
And just for the record, the April meeting is on what day in April?
April fourteenth.
Fourteenth, I think.
April fourteenth.
April fourteenth.
Okay. The day before tax day.
So Armin Biladi.
Aye.
Brian Clark.
Aye.
Steve Katz.
Aye.
Tony Mergo.
Aye.
And Jerome Sfotrito.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I think, I think you could just ask if there's any opposition to it, Jerome. We don't need to do a roll call for that.
Any opposition?
None.
None.
None, none. All right.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night, bye.